Counting down. Bring the meeting order, please. Have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So everyone has an opportunity to review the minutes. Any additions or corrections?
I'm going to approve the next amendment.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Mark.
Uh, Flo.
And Pete.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mark and Carrie. Mail?
I didn't have any.
I didn't have any mail. Did any of our other... Have any mail? Bring to the meeting. County Attorney, A.J.
Okay. There's no, is there? There's not, I can't see it.
Surely.
No.
It's right there. Okay. Um, I have nothing to report. The Commissioner's keeping you really busy. Um, I like the way the county council handles the county attorney's position.
Thank you.
Keep it. Thank you, thank you. Number five reports. Before we get there, I would like to go back a little bit and like to welcome our new councilman from District One, Mike Wenta. Mike has joined us in the middle, but I'm sure he's raring to go as if we're starting out from the starting gates early on. Glad to hear you've joined us. Now we can move on down to the reports. Commissioner's representative, Barton.
I really don't have a list. I have quite some last two meetings. This morning we approved, they're gonna, for the Vice Attorney, they're gonna have a soapbox derby, and we did approve closing Zeigler Road down there for them to have that, that one day. I guess they, uh, Thomas is gonna be here again this year. They give us the schedule when their parking lots are gonna be closed. It'll be about a week and a half. Just felt like you here. We hired, hired a new mechanic down at the highway garage mechanic we had, wanted to go out on the trucks, and we hired a new mechanic, and he's gonna be there next Monday. And also with the highway department, we built, bought a new V-butter, we gave permission for Jay to buy a new V-box for one of the trucks, but one of the spreads we had had in, those things are just junk. We had enough money left to help our people where we bought our new trucks to do that. So that's about a $10,300 item. I'm still, we're still trying to get some quotes or some idea on a highway garage. We just, we gotta get something down there. For that highway garage, it's just, Mr. Flo, that down there, he knows what kind of shape that's in. But, you know, it's the same sort. We need a lot, not got much money to deal with. Somehow or another this year, I'd like to try and, try and get something done. That's about all we have. By the next meeting, I think we're gonna have our capital plan in place of what we need to do, and I'll, I'll bring that to you the next meeting, how that, how that turns out.
Okay.
About all I got.
Barton, I got a question.
Barton?
Yes. A few months, a while back, there was some, up in Indiana Industrial Park, there was some care, that property up there, that they were, they were wanting to purchase. Whatever happened to that?
Well, nothing's happened, nothing's happened yet. Shirley and I are going to meet with them this...tomorrow. Tomorrow, to discuss what they, what they want to do. I mean, what they want us to do is transfer. They, they say that their bank requires them to own the land that they're on, for them to make the loan they wanted. I don't have an objection with that. My, but what I wanna get worked out is whatever we do with them, we have to do, I think should do with everybody up there. I don't think we should be negotiating every time we get somebody wanting to, you know, if it's, if it's putting a price on the ground and offering that to everybody that's up there with those, with those 50-year leases or whatever time they've got left on.
So right now, you don't know if this is a policy change by the bank? Cause obviously they've gotten loaned before and haven't had to do this.
Well, that's what it...no, I don't. They, they say that their bank is requiring to do that. I've asked to talk to the bank, and the only thing I've got a chance to do is talk to their accountant. So I don't know.
Okay.
Realistically, the county had, the county... They'd get no benefit out of the ground. I mean, the ground is leased to those people on a long-term lease at a dollar a year, so we're not gonna gain anything from it. And there's, you know, there's taxes, they're paying the taxes on the ground now, so it's gonna be a wash whether they own the ground or we own the ground. So my only thought is to make, make it equitable to everybody that's, that's in the park. I don't know. If you have any thoughts about it, I'd...
Well, the only thing I have a problem with, let's say they bought it, and you sold it to the other businesses up there too, and let's say two years down the road, they, they went out of business and tried to sell it. I don't think they should sell for profit. I think they should sell the same thing the county sold it to, that they bought it from the county.
Well...
I mean, that's why...
That's true, but I, I don't know if you're in any different position than you are now. If they sell their business now, they can sell it for whatever they want to, and the lease just gets transferred, transferred to the new business. So, in reality, you've got, you've got a lot of years before you could resell that or, you know, when the lease was up, you would get the, the building, whatever's on it, but by the time the lease is up, the buildings are gonna be ready to tour down anyway, you know?
Okay.
So, you know, if you have any thoughts about how you ought to structure what we do, I would be glad to.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Our new, the light box to show our agendas up there, I guess we'll have to be careful because we're gonna...
I think, I, the old one, we could lock it in, so there may be a feature on that that we haven't, didn't find this morning, Shirley.
So, so this evening, this evening, we're trying out so that everyone can follow the agenda along as we go down. A representative from Economic Development Group, I know he was planning to be here, but maybe the, the weather. We could skip down any old business. Last week, we left, or last month, we left hanging. And I guess we can jump down into new business, and Item A is the election of a Vice President to replace Mark Brockman. Do we have any?
I like motion Dale Strong.
That's not fair, Shirley. They're ganging up on me now.
Well, let's get moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion or any additional?
I made a motion to close ballots.
How about a second to close the ballot?
Oh, second.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to elect Dale Strong as Vice President. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you, Mr. Vice President, for...
Thank, thank you all. One heck of a campaign.
Oh, your cheapest one I've ever had.
Thank you, Dale, taking on that additional responsibility.
Okay, thank you, Shirley.
Item number B, reappointments to replace Mark Brockman. We had two appointments that he was filling in, the First Aid Rate Review and Revision Committee. And the second was the Fay County Solid Waste Board. Mike, is that something that you feel you might be interested in?
Sure, whatever you want to give me.
Is there anyone else? I know everyone else is involved in some of the other committees along the way, but if you feel real strongly, maybe... I'm not sure if I know exactly, the First Aid Rate Review, how often they meet?
Rarely.
Rarely, and it's a one-year term.
It was a good move on my part.
And then the other one is the Solid Waste Board.
And, and they will be meeting...Julie Greason called me about, asked if we had someone to replace Mark. And I wrote it down on my calendar. I think it's, I think they, well, they meet monthly, and I think they'll be meeting, I think it's next Wednesday at 5:00.
Wednesday at 5:00?
Where at?
Here. Here, in this room.
Okay. If there's no other, no other volunteers to take over those two, then we thank Mike Wenta for taking those two appointments on. We could make a choice here to either go on with Item C, or I see that our representative from Economic Development Group is coming from us now.
Yeah.
And Pete, would you like to go ahead and...
Sure.
We jump back up?
Sorry for being late. Huh? Yeah, it's starting to slush up. If it doesn't freeze, we'll be okay. If it does, we'll be in trouble.
Let me just go freeze.
You think it'll freeze? If it does, we got a problem.
There's a lot, a lot of water out there already.
You have one? Oh, yeah. Congratulations. Hurry up so everyone can get out before it gets too bad.
Pete, you may notice that we've got the display...
Oh, it's working again, huh?
It is working again, so...
Okay. Okay, now it's working again.
You don't have to use it, but I just want you to be aware that if you wanted to...
Okay. This afternoon, under speaking topics, this afternoon, we had a conference call with Project D'Arsonoff. You'll recall, this is a project that was formerly Neptune. Has, and this was the project they were working on, the windmill blades, et cetera. Had a conference call with them. They think they will be ready to go forward with their project by no later than the end of April. I will remind everyone that they've been saying this for the last two years, but we continue to work with them. Project Jet manufactures military components. They're supposed to be coming from Florida on spring break, so we think they'll be here on the 17th, and we look forward to meeting with them. Spoke with folks from Project R. They are still considering Connersville as a site for location. They were very candid with me in saying that they wanna see one of these other projects break before they commit to coming, but they are still interested in our community. And now we get to the exciting part. Think, as you look through these reports that I give you, you'll see that we respond to leads on an ongoing basis. About seven weeks ago, we responded to a lead that was given to us by the state. The state then followed up with additional questions and phone calls, and last week, week before last, I'm sorry, we had a site visit. Barton, the mayor and I entertained the principals of the company, the manufacturing company. Showed them sites and community. They were very, very interested in our community. We, they invited us to go to dinner with them that night, which would be a week ago, Thursday. And the reason I mention the date is because we went to dinner at a restaurant up in Indianapolis, and it was the night we had that major ice storm. So I got the privilege of riding back from Indianapolis in the ice with Leonard driving. For any of you who have ever had the opportunity to ride with him, it's truly an experience. So, but then, while we were at that meeting, they asked us to come visit their site. So last Friday, Shirley and Leonard and I flew to New Jersey to see the company's research and development facility. Quite a unique visit, would you say, Shirley? But we saw the products, we saw them in operation, we're reviewing their research now, and they have expressed a high level of interest in our community. So, you know, keep our fingers crossed, guys, with everything else. I attended the Japanese American Association. As most of you know, Japan is one of the largest employers in the state of Indiana, so we felt that it was important that we maintain a relationship with, with the Japanese American Association. Shirley and Barton and I had, were invited to attend a regional economic development initiative. We haven't participated in a regional organization for probably the last four or five years. And as a result of us not participating in regional organizations, we're not eligible to receive EDA funds. That, our participation, economic developments' participation in that regional organization was funded by the county primarily. And the monies that we are eligible to receive from EDA go primarily to infrastructure projects related to the county. So I'm going to mention today that I think it's important that we become affiliated again with a regional organization. We're restricted as to who we can participate with. It has to be, they have to be contiguous counties. So whether Wayne County or Henry County, Franklin County have to be associated with a regional group before we could become a part of a regional group. But we're gonna continue to, I think with Barton and Shirley's support, continue to, to pursue becoming a part of that. There's money available, and I think that's the important thing, that those ED funds, EDA funds do become available to, to the counties. In that meeting, we're county representatives from Henry, Rush...
Union?
Union.
Wayne?
No, was Wayne there?
Hmm, I think so.
Yeah, Wayne and Fay. So, and those would be the primary group, primary members of a new group if we, if we elect to become involved again. Pramco, we've talked about, and it's completed now, or pretty much completed. I think John Baker received the purchase agreement today. Project Lawn, if you've been up on the north end of town, you'll see that they're progressing. They plan to have an open house on March 19th, so we'll be sending out invitations to, to all of you to come up and join. Questions?
The regional economic development, the original group, that's been disbanded, correct?
That is correct.
How much is it gonna cost to get, does it cost anything to get in?
Yes, it will.
How much is...
We don't know.
You don't know?
What we're doing, they've asked each, each community that will potentially be involved to put together a committee to study the pros and cons of being involved in that project. And the state group, we, the, the meeting was conducted by representatives from the state who are encouraging participation. So those representatives will be setting up dates to come to the community. I'll be soliciting folks to sit on that committee and, you know, to determine whether it's, whether or not it's something that we wanna pursue.
Second question. Best-case scenario, a lot of these projects, let's say they all came at once. If you've been looking forward, they all can't fit in the Visteon building, what are you gonna do? Are you, have you been looking to what you can do there?
You know, I, I, I got laughed at one time about six or seven months ago, cause I stood in front of it, and I don't know if it was this council or the city council, and I said, you know, as, as, as we go forward, one of the things that we're gonna have to consider is a shell building. We're marketing the community in two different ways. Obviously, we're aggressively marketing the Visteon building, but as you know, we have an offer in place to purchase that building. If that comes to fruition, then we really don't have anything to market beyond that. So I guess the, the short answer to your question is, yeah, we have given thought to what do we do next? And, and at some point, if the Visteon building, the sale of the Visteon building is a success, then we're gonna have to look at, at building something that we have to market. We have worked with several, as a matter of fact, I have a meeting tomorrow with a contractor out of Rushville, wrote about, I know you're probably familiar with that.
Shelbyville.
Shelbyville.
I worked for them.
Oh, did you? They're coming in tomorrow, talk to us about a shell building, and some unique ways of financing a shell building that they have. And I think a lot of you have attended meetings that we had with a company called Carmong, who does the same thing, and they have several methods of, of funding shell buildings, so... But I guess the answer to your question is, yeah, we have, have given consideration to that. All right.
Pete?
Yes, sir.
Quick question. The company that you visited in New Jersey, is this the company that's considering leaving New Jersey, relocating?
No, they have a, they have a research and development facility in New Jersey, and they will maintain that research and development facility in New Jersey. New Jersey, as I understand it, Shirley, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, you know, New Jersey does not have a very friendly climate as it relates to manufacturers and to new businesses in general, which is surprising because they're broke. But, so that's why the company is looking at, at other locations, and we're one of three that they're looking at. But, I mean, again, Shirley, correct me if I'm wrong, they were very, very pleased with how they were treated when they were here, and with the, with the tight packages we can put together for them.
Are you able to speak publicly about the kind of business they're in?
I, I would only say, sir, that it's manufacturing, if that, if that's sufficient.
That'll get you by tonight.
Well, I mean, and I, you know, I think it's challenging for me to stand and talk about these things in a public forum, but if, you know, if you wanna give me a holler or something, I can walk you through it.
I understand, and I appreciate that.
Well, and I think that I would like to add one thing that impressed me. I'm, I'm new to going to those kind of meetings, but the fact that they had money to invest, and in fact, the state, if you're gonna invest your own money, then you don't need our money, kind of attitude is really what sent them looking elsewhere. So I think they're very aware of what's going on countrywide, and there will be some competition to get that manufacturing facility.
Pete, what's the status of carbon motors? Are they done?
Jim, you know, my answer's gonna be the same all the time. As a community, we continue to support any business that is willing to bring jobs to Fay County. And so, that said, we have to continue to support carbon motors until we're formally notified that they're done. I can say that their lease on the office space at the Visteon property expires March 31st, and they have made no attempt to renew or extend that lease.
So nobody's talked to them a couple months?
There have been attempts, but no.
Okay.
I talked to Stacy. I mean, I, you know, but that, it wasn't really about...
About the business?
Yeah.
Okay, as an economic developer, have they had elections of officers yet this year?
No, we haven't. It was postponed as of today. We're redoing the bylaws, and we missed the fact that we had to have 10 days' notification to make modifications to the bylaws, so our next meeting is on the 20th. At that time, they'll elect officers.
They still got term limits?
We have, we have redone the bylaws completely, and yes, there will be term limits.
Pete, I, I've heard from several people that EDG board is too large. Are you thinking about shrinking?
That's what we're, that's what we spent this afternoon working on here. What we didn't know, and this goes back to long before I was involved with EDG, that the Articles of Incorporation limit the number of members on the board to 13. And we've been operating with whatever we, whatever. I mean, we didn't know that there, we didn't know what the Articles of Incorporation said. So as we started the review process, John Baker discovered that. So now we're working to shrink the board to, at, at minimum, or at maximum what, what the...
Bylaws.
What the Articles of Incorporation require.
At one time, you had, what, like 25 members?
26.
26.
And we still do. And it is, you know, it's somewhat unwieldy when you're, when you're trying to make decisions, and luckily, when this trip that I, we just, Shirley and I, the mayor just went on, they had approved funding for me to travel, so I had, you know, a pot of money that I could use for travel. But if I hadn't, then I would've had to wait for a board meeting, which would've taken us out of the window. The principal of the company that we went to visit is from Ireland, and he had a narrow window of time that he was gonna be here, so we had to react pretty quickly. If we hadn't had that approved money to spend, wouldn't have been able to go. So getting the board smaller so that we can be more nimble is, is one of the objectives.
Anyone comment? Thank you, Pete.
Okay, I, I do wanna mention one other thing, cause this goes to Jim. We have attempted over the last several months to go after a business, segment of business that is under pressure right now, that being the arms manufacturers. We have made phone calls, some letters, et cetera, trying to get out to knock on the door and talk to these folks. We've been unsuccessful in doing that until just recently. And we took a different strategy. We said, instead of paying for me to go there, we'll pay you to come here, and we've discussed that with our board. So we sent letters to two companies in Maryland inviting them to come to our community, and outlining the benefits of being in our community, and to one manufacturer in Colorado. Both of those states that I mentioned are taking a very negative approach to arms manufacturing.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Guys better get out of here, cause it's...
Okay. I think we're moving down to Item C. Annual jail report, Billy? And thank you. I knew you had a presentation that...
I wrote on the back of my, is it on the back of yours? Okay, I think the...
I was gonna say, did we get a prize if we have to run?
You got a free night to stay at the county jail.
Careful what you ask for. Okay, I have this, this is the annual jail report. We have to forward this every year to the judge, the prosecutor, president of county council. And you can see in the, from the first page of it, there, it sort of tells you what we have to put in this report and what it consists of. You turn to the third page, at the top, it says booking statistics. The story goes over the amount, the amount of people that were booked in the jail. It shows a three-year breakdown. 2012 was down compared to 2011, though we had 1,025 bookings compared to 1,187 in '11. You can sort of see the males, obviously, almost three times the amount or so, at least, compared to women, but that, that women arrest is sort of up compared to what it is probably in a five or 10-year average. Next section down there is our average daily population. In 2012, we had 108, in '11, we had 130. So we're down, you know, a little bit, but if you look in the day's paper under the arrest records, you know... reports, you know, there's probably 15 in there. So all those people came to jail, you know, via the weekend and stuff. So it doesn't give us a lot of wiggle room, because you have 114 beds, and we're average 100 day-to-day. And that can go up to, in the 130s, or it could go down into, you know, to 100 or so. But it's very, very seldom have I seen it under 100, so, in the last probably five years. On the next page, it says average daily population month by month. At the bottom, it shows our DOC money for the year. 2012, we had 70,000 or so. 2011, 244,000. And obviously, there with 10, it's shown on there, 492,000. So it's a huge drop in three years, but still, at 70,000, that's still a better than a kick in the face, in my opinion. If there's any questions while I'm going through here, right?
I got a question. Obviously, revenue dropped quite a bit from 2010 to 2012.
Right.
And that's because of our housing out of county.
Right. We're not housing DOC anymore.
Yeah. Is most of the local, is it drug-related stuff?
If you turn to the next page, the top 10 charges for 2012, you can see the number one for 2012 was theft. Before that, in '11, it was OB-WI, and '10 was OB-WI. And OB-WI come in second in '12 again. Normally, that is the top arrests we have. You have alcohol-related, because you can see public intoxication is right under there in those, in the top three. You have public intoxication, OB-WI, and battery, and now we have theft fallen in there. There, you know, with alcohol-related offenses. The top 10, I mean, you can look at that, possession of controlled substances, there was 156. Batteries, which is, you know, the fight, that's 181. And then public intoxication, 188, and so forth. So it'll sort of tell you what's there and what we're looking at. These make it a little...they're easy to track. I like looking at numbers and stuff like this, so we can sort of see what we're dealing with and where our problem areas lie. Any questions on that page?
Could we jump back into the other page?
Sure.
Back to what Mark was questioning. The 70,000, is that also for housing?
Yes.
Indiana Department of Corrections? So it hasn't gone totally to...
No, it's not gone completely. What happens is, as soon as those...they're sentenced to the Department of Corrections from the courts, we automatically start getting paid for them. The DOC has it set up now where we have to do our own transports to their facility. They no longer come and get them for us. So we have that, they've sort of put that burden back on the counties. So when we keep them, you know, when they call and say, hey, bring, you know, John Doe up here, and we've had him for four days, we get four days' worth of compensation for them. But other than that, they're gone almost immediately. Within a week, they're usually trucked out of here.
And then, while you're on that page, why is April so small, month-by-month average?
Well, I don't know.
I'm just curious.
I think, you know, I guess when I look at it, I would have thought we would have been a little higher in July and August, September, in the warmer months, but we also have a thing here, you know, where, I don't want to say our homeless end up coming to jail to spend the winter, but in my 20 years-plus experience, we have people come to jail in the winter because they have nowhere else to go.
Billy, would you, excuse me, would you try to put that up under the light there and see if they can, so our audience can see that chart? Thank you.
So we do have some of those that do that, you know, they have nowhere else to go. So if they go out here and commit a Class D felony of a theft, such as shoplifting, they spend their time in jail, you know, a couple of months or so through the hard parts, and then, I think, you'll lead to their 10 day days in jail or so, and then have a suspended release. So it gets them through the winter time, and they're able to function. So that is sort of why I think the high numbers, we have those in January, February, and March. June, that's when most everybody takes vacation, so everybody's home, but not work. So it gets out of their routine, so to speak.
Very interesting.
Yeah, it is. Going back, let's get...you guys can read the staffing portion of it. You know, we're open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We don't close, period, ever. So the jail portion doesn't. I'm not gonna go through the staffing with you, because everybody can read. If there's questions about it, everybody can kind of get ahold of me. Obviously, with staffing, just like everybody else, you know, we're all short, but that's a problem in itself. Go back to the page that has transports at the top. I sort of found this interesting, that in 2012, my transport officer and jail officers drove 45,000 worth of miles all over the state of Indiana. That's transporting prisoners through to the prison, that is mental institutions, that is doctor visits, hospitals, visits, other courts, transporting them back here for court, back to prison. And that's a huge amount of miles to be driving. But there's no other way around it. With the addition of us not having DOC here anymore to the point where we hold a bunch, we have to, like I said earlier, we have to transport them on our own now. And if they, you know, if they sentence one on Tuesday, and they call Wednesday and one, we have to take them. They can do the same thing on Wednesday, and they want them on Thursday, we have to take them. So we can't really bunch our trips up. We do with the females, they're a little more easy to get along with, where we can take, you know, five, six, seven, or eight at a time. But with the males, as soon as they're sentenced at the prison calls, we have to take off with them.
I've got a question. What's that do to your manpower?
We have, I have one transport officer that takes care of the most, all the transports during the day, but if we get some of them bunched up, we have to call in, you know, call in officers for overtime and send them with it. So the biggest bird we run into is vehicles, keeping vehicles that are trustworthy enough to go to plenty of Westville. You know, some of those are four- or five-hour trips, so it's a pretty big task. If you go down to the overtime, since we brought up calling in people for overtime, our overtime budget's down a couple of thousand dollars from last year in '12, so we're pretty happy with that. If you drop down to the medical, in 2012, we had 137,000 worth of medical bills. In 2011, it was 154,900, almost 155,000. And then in '10, it was 132,900. We try to keep track of that medical and stay on top of that. We have a lot of negotiating, with a lot of resourcing with all the facilities we deal with. I've sort of become buddies with a lot of the people in the billing department that I have to call and talk to when we get those bills in. My secretary brings those right to me. I usually handle all that negotiating with bills. I just know them. Barb from Memphis, who runs the airbag thing, I just call her and say, hey, Barb, this billing. I usually get, why, baby? She'd say, how much is this gonna be? And she'll give me the information. And it's become sort of a joke. So the medical costs, there's nothing else we can do with that. That includes our doctor, the nurses, the drugs, the everything they get, the care. There's just no other way around that medical cost. And if you probably went back and looked at some, you know, seven or eight years ago, I can remember us having some up in the 300,000 before we were able to negotiate, so... So they either take sort of what we pay them, or they deal with day J. So they don't like to have to deal with them, because it just lays there. So are there questions on that?
Yeah. Doctor comes once a week.
Yes.
How long is he there approximately?
It depends on the volume of prisons he has to see and the amount of medical requests we get. The nursing staff fields a bunch of those requests, and they're fairly simple, but when they ask to see the doctor and they turn in that slip, they have to see the doctor. And it can be from, either from one to 10 in a day. So he can be there for an hour, he can be there for three hours. The doctor and the nurses, I mean, I can't say enough about the nursing staff that I have there. They go above and beyond in areas that they normally wouldn't have to, and I rely on them, you know, heavily in that area, and it has helped us, you know, with our medical savings and a lot of the cost. A lot of the stuff is done at the jail. We hate to take them out of there. We just have a guy who's, we're gonna be getting a bill for, you know, for some congestive heart failure. I can't give his name honestly for HIPAA, but, I mean, he spent three days up there, and same thing, we just had an inmate who was pregnant. She's coming off of heroin, we had to take her out, and she ended up getting sent to Wisher. So we get her, you know, released from our custody, so hopefully, we only have to pay the hospital bill, that portion, and Wisher will have to deal with her on the other. We try to jockey those things around. Normally, those don't happen until on a Saturday night, till about 7:30 at night, is when all those things start to happen. So they're calling me, I'm calling judges to try to get, you know, ORs things signed, and it becomes a big hassle. But if we don't stay on top of that, and we have a baby born, you know, while they're in our care, and everybody says, well, we're paying for it anyway, that may be, but it's not coming out of the state of medical budget, it's coming out of the state of Indiana. So our taxpayers are still going and paying our money, but it's not our locals, so that's about the best we can do. Any questions on, more on the medical? I give each one of you a copy of this, you can take it home. It makes for some interesting reading. Sit down and just go through it all, and sort of size up everything that goes on. Dishwasher was installed last week, and they had training on it today. It's just like everything else, it's new, so people are sort of like, wow, it's not gonna work. Well, it's gonna work, or else. They're using the new trays, so all of the new stuff for the jail is all installed. The microwave went out today, so I went and bought a microwave up at Sears, so we'll pay for that out of commissary, just to move on with it. So the new dishwasher's in, everything is there, it's installed, and it's all ready to go. So it should be fine.
Billy, a couple of years ago, when I was new to the council, we had a tour. We had an opportunity to tour. And I know that the jail was something, or the kitchen was something that quite often referred to as needed some help.
Right.
Perhaps you could arrange a tour for, we have some new members?
Sure.
That we could...
That would be great. It would really help if all of you should come, but if the new guys are leased, that way, when I come here and tell you that the bench and the padded cells tore up, you're not going. I wonder what that looks like? So you guys have an idea. And we can do it either after the next council meeting in the evening, after it's over. I mean, tonight's not gonna be good unless you wanna ride home this morning.
Tonight might not be good. Maybe yeah.
So we got snow dog and a sled out here, we're ready, so... But it would be good if you guys take a tour, and especially everybody, so you can sort of see the kitchen and the work that's been done in there. I mean, it looks fantastic. So if you go on back to the page, it says inmate showers. You can sort of see some of the pictures we took, put in the report. That's probably gonna be the next area that we're gonna get bombarded on by the jail inspector. He was really hitting on the kitchen and the fire alarms of the last inspection. All of those things now have been fixed and repaired, and they're above grade. But now, we're dealing with the showers. Not a lot of ventilation back there in the jail, and you have, you know, 15 guys taking showers every day, two, a couple a day. That moisture has built up onto the metal there and obviously roughed it out, you can see from the pictures. We had two of the showers fixed a couple of years ago, where they came in, they sandblasted the entire shower, the metal and everything. They put a sealer over it, like a gravel kind of sealer. The shower portion and the block, it works great. The metal is coming right through again. We paid 11,000 bucks a shower to have those done. We're gonna need to figure a better way to fix that metal back. It's gonna have to probably be covered with stainless or something, if we're gonna expect it to last. But the other stuff that worked inside the shower worked perfect, but it's gonna take a combination of the two. A lot of that doesn't fall on you guys, except for when it comes time to find the money, but it falls on the commissioners to deal with. And Bill, I'm sort of sticking my nose in it because I wanna get it done, and at least get some bids to see where we're at. We got a guy coming in tomorrow, Fuzzy Lake, is gonna come in and take a look at them and, you know, give us a bid to fix the metal, and what do we take or what are suggestions are. But that's the next thing on the project list. On the next page is the padded cell. You guys sort of get a picture of it. The picture at the bottom is a grate where, you know, we wash all the waste and everything, the body glue down there and flush that. You can sort of see on the right picture at the top, that's the bench and the bed that there's there for them to lay on. They tore the, they tore the floor out of the darn thing. Somehow, they can find, wherever little crack is back there, they find it, they get their finger in it, and they rip it off, and then they try to get it through. Hence the mess in the floor. So we try to take care of it the best we can, but, you know, you get somebody in there that's on heroin or on crack or whatever, and they start going off, they can have that thing tore up before we can ever deal with them. So in the last two or three people that we've had tear it up, we've been able to pull video off and have that video for court, and we've been able to charge them for restitution. And we've gotten 3,000 bucks on those, 1,000 out of each person, that's what we charge them. If they tear it, we're putting 1,000 bucks on them. But whether we get it or not, I don't know, but we've gotten three. So we're sort of doing pretty well on that, to have that repaired, but that's anywhere from 5,000 to about 8,000 dollars to repair that whole padded cell. And that's on the list to be looked at also, because when we put them in there, again, we're responsible for their safety and their care, and we have to make sure they're not harming themselves or the staff. And with a padded cell like that, that black part there you see is exposed concrete with just a little bit of glue. That's glue, that black stuff is just glue, and backing off of it, so, you know, we sort of have to be careful with that. That's sort of fast going through it, but sort of an overview of what's going on. You guys each have your own copy, everybody can look through it and read it. If you have questions, do not hesitate to call me, email me. I'm not very hard to find, and you will hear... Any questions about the report at this point?
Thank you.
Sheriff, I'd just like to say that these stats are very well-formatted. Unfortunately, it tells a very sad story about part of our society as well.
You know, it does, and when we look at it, I don't know, it's unfortunate, but there's, I don't know what the answers are.
I guess it could be worse.
Well, I've seen some other jail reports throughout the state, and we could swap, I'm telling you right now, that we could swap theft out in one county that I know of, and we could put child molestation in there, for sure, along with rape in another county at the top. So, not that I like theft, because I don't like people stealing people's stuff, but I'm gonna have to keep a sense of who it could be.
Could be a lot worse.
You know, the minor consumptions are down at the bottom there. You know, with many of those that we have, we're sort of happy to have just 70. We're hoping that the kids aren't drinking as much as what they used to be, but you never know. I'd like to say that we're not enforcing the law as much as we could, but look at the paper, read the paper, and look at the arrest sheet. I mean, we're putting people in jail like mad, so I don't know what the deterrent is. The courts, I think, are doing their part, prosecutors are doing their part. It's just, I don't know, they're hard-headed. No different than the guys who come here last week or so intoxicated, that's in the courtroom, we have to brawl. I mean, I don't know, don't come to the courthouse intoxicated on heroin. What's going to happen to you? Any questions?
Billy, you're talking about vehicles. Can I get a list of, or we get a list of the vehicles, the number of vehicles, the makes, models, and how many miles you got on them?
Okay.
So that I just know what you got, what you gotta deal with there right now?
Okay. You got an email? I can email those to you, or you got them?
Yeah, or just give them to Debbie, and then she can put it in our mailbox, so everybody gets a copy. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
What about next month's meeting? Maybe a tour after the meeting?
That's fine.
First of April, anyone?
No.
I think we'd like to see it at bright and shiny new kitchen.
Okay. It does look good, so... All right, then we'll shoot for that at the next meeting. What's the date on the next meeting?
April 2nd.
Okay.
April 2nd.
All right. You know, that's what we'll shoot for, as soon as the meeting's over, we'll all meet and head over there to look around. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next up, tax statements. He may have. He may have run off with our...
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
I just wanted to report, I've been looking at outsourcing the tax segments. I have gotten a couple quotes on that versus doing the mint house. I'm not sure there's a huge difference in my one way or the other. I do wanna know if you... I do wanna know if you'll be willing to support me in getting some extra help through the tax season. The auditor has till April 1st to get the rates in there and the abstract approved and ready for me to print statements. That gives me approximately 15 to 18 days to get statements printed and out because they have to be out mailed to the property owners 15 days prior to the due date.
How many?
15.
15 prior to the-
Now, that's- that's maybe subject to change because they have a law now in the House to change that where they are going to change the due dates for the tax statements and also change some of the other things. So we're looking at approximately- approximately 15, 18 days, working days to get these tax statements printed, stuffed, loaded, ready to go and sorted for the mail. So my question is, if- if we have to do them in-house, if that's the best method, I will need to make sure in- in part-time and so I will be giving you a- an additional, the first part of April, and I'll need your support in that to get these done.
Can you share with us what you've learned talking to these companies or organizations?
For the most part, these companies will- they give you a basis of what they'll charge. They give you a setup fees and those things, but to give you an actual cost per statement for the processing and the mailing and everything, they won't do that because they don't know all of your zip codes that you have within your county and what- and ones that you mail out of state. They don't have all those zip codes available to them, so they cannot estimate what the postage is exactly gonna be, so they can't pinpoint down to an exact amount per statement.
How many statements do you send out? Approximately, did you send out last year, I guess?
We print at- we print approximately, believe, about 15,000 statements. Through the mail, in the single envelopes, we mailed almost 11,000 last year. Then we have the big envelopes we send out with the multiple statements in it that'll have eight to 10 statements in it. Then there's, you know, we go from there, so.
Mary, how many hours for a part-time person would you need?
I'm not sure. Usually when I have four people in there working, it takes us at least three weeks to get the tax statements done. My best- I- I really don't know exactly, I haven't figured out exactly what I would need in part-time.
You got- you got one person off on sick leave. Do you still have one person off on sick leave? No.
Are she- she's back?
No, you later.
You only got one worker, right?
I have only one person working.
You and the other one person.
And I wanna clarify something about the other day on Thursday. I left the office a little after 3:00, I had an appointment out of town. The girl that works in my office called in sick that day. There was no other thing to do but close that office. I couldn't put off that appointment. And so, you know, I- I know there's things that happen and- but I- and I told Ms. Wise- Ms. Wise that- that morning when she came in and tried to talk to me, that that was gonna- that was gonna be.
Well, and I think, you know, we all discussed this back when we talked about, you can't expect substantial cuts without some cuts in service.
My- you know, my best scenario would get my employee back and- and my part-time seasonal, you know, but-
How much part-time money do you have left, Mary?
I'm not sure exactly, it's less than $2,000.
Okay, on a part-timer, if we- if we would get you a couple part-timers to go through this tax season, we're looking at two months' employment?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure because the- another problem is the fact that while we're doing these statements, we still gotta do the river of daily stuff. Now, that means that somebody's gotta be training these part-time people on how to do all that, and I've only got one girl that runs the statements and she runs the statements, so that means I've gotta train- we'd have to train somebody else to work that desk up front or to help with it and to answer questions on the phone. It's, you know, if I can find somebody that's been there before, great, but-
But if you had a part-timer for a couple months, starting with April, we'll say April the 1st, and run it through to May the 31st, part-timers, I'm not talking about no full-timers, part-timers at this time, but that- is that an answer or not?
I don't think it is, really.
Don't think so?
I really don't think it is.
So you're saying what- basically what you're saying then is that you're gonna need a full-timer and a part-timer? Why?
Well, or at what-
We're not- we're not only- we're not only- I'm not only looking at the statements, I'm looking at the day-to-day stuff that's needed to be done. And with the loss of that system in October, I- I have one part-time girl that I'm- I'm bringing in two, three days a week now, just to help me get that stuff caught back up. And- and she's learning how to do the front desk to help with that, so, you know, it's- it's a sad situation. I don't know the answers, I don't know how we're gonna do it, I just-
But if we had- if we had a couple part-timers at 25 hours a week or 28 hours a week through those two months, that's gotta be a help, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah, it would be a help, definitely.
I mean, it's gotta be a help instead of hiring a full-timer.
But, you know, I just- I haven't gotten the figures, I'll figure out though what it would- would be.
Back on the 15,000 statements, the two people that you've talked to, have they given you a range, you know, and postage aside, what's the fee without postage, for instance? Because the postage is gonna be the same whether we pay them or we pay- or we do it ourselves, so really-
Well, no, not necessarily, because some of- some of these companies have a better opportunity to lower the postage by doing bulk mailings where they can lump our statements in with another county's statements. So that kinda helps out sometimes.
So it should even be less, it could possibly be less.
It could be, and- but if they don't- if we don't have it done and when they got excess mailing going out, we can see the cost to get a little more-
Are we talking 50 cents a statement or a quarter a statement, you know? Part of it has to do with the envelope, so-
The one lady I talked to today was looking at about 40 to 43 cents a statement, which is a little bit of a savings, but not a lot. It just depends. I've got another company that is willing to give me another quote today. It's just the fact that I've- I've gotta get this done because as, you know, April 1st, I've gotta be ready to run those statements or to get them taken care of. And I have one girl, she runs the statements and she is also the one that gets up all the information for the banks and all that, so she's gonna be tied up with that too, so. And she's the only one that's done that so far, so I haven't learned to do that, so, you know, that's- that's another learning process if we get somebody else to learn how to do that, so.
So Mary, back to what Russ is talking about, the dates, you really, instead of from April 1st into May, you really need somebody from, say, middle of March till May 10th.
I need somebody after May 10th because it takes us two- it'll probably take us two weeks of the mail this year. Because every- every day that mail comes in, and if we're waiting on customers, we can only process a little bit of mail between customers and we- we process the mail as we go between customers as long as we can, but once- once we get to a point where the customers are in line all day, you can't process that mail. It sits until after- after that due date and then you can process the mail.
So the- one of the- the training would be an issue with the part-time people, but that would give you some additional relief and help?
Yeah, it would, definitely.
And but you're still- do you expect to get additional quotations on the-
I have another company that I talked to today that's- that's willing to give me a quote on it. I did not get back to the office till 4:00 o'clock today. I have a district meeting for the Indiana Judiciary Association, so I'll probably give them a call tomorrow and see what we can do with that.
We can check in with you later in the week two to see if you've gotten any additional information.
Either way, I- I need to know whether you're gonna support me in getting some additional money to pay part-time if I get part-time or- or bring the full-time back, you know. Either way, I just, you know, I need some kind of guidance on that to make sure that we can get this done.
Understood.
Because if- if something happens that the auditor can't get the abstract approved or that- those information into the computer system, if, you know, she gets bogged down and can't get that done, then that puts me behind, lessens my timeframe.
Understood.
So it's-
Any other questions, suggestions?
I have one question, if I may ask, that pertains to your October crash. I understand that you're doing backups. Who's doing those backups? Is that IT or is that somebody in your office doing those backups?
IT does backups now with the- the main system and everything. I also backup my system in my office every week.
Is that what I read? Do you- you purchase an external hard drive?
Yes.
Okay. You know, those files, are we kept them out- kept offsite or are they kept onsite?
They're kept in the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I'll be in touch. Council committees. For some time, to mention to the new people, the new members of our council, we've talked about a committee to get together to compare the three different employee groups that we have here that the county works with, the courthouse employees, the 24/7, 365 employees, and then I think the highway department. And has many discussions have- have around budget time in particular, the need for a consistent handling of whether it's the initial salary or raises for people that, you know, no one has seen in the county for quite some time. But the feeling that you can't compare apples to oranges because we have- really have three different groups. Russ, I think maybe you have been a proponent of that, and I think one of the things that that has happened is we had the employee handbooks updated, but I think we've suggested maybe if we could study and have come to a better understanding of what the differences are between the groups, how overtime is treated, holidays. Each- each of the different groups are treated somewhat differently because of the employee handbook. And the other thing that we have had a committee for in the past is the budget committee. I think Dale, you're one of our- you are the remaining member of the budget committee, and I think that you and- and Mark and Ron did an outstanding job, but there's more to be done. I think we've talked earlier about the need to recreate that committee or reestablish the committee. And so I'm really looking for volunteers for two different committees because I think as we've asked our employee- I ask the different courthouse employees to come up with ideas how to do the same or more with fewer people, and as we've asked people not to, you know, to put in a new budget with reduced- with reduced funds, I think those committees go hand-in-hand in having a good understanding. So I'm asking again if we could form these two committees to work between now and the budget time so that we would have a better understanding of what Mary and Melinda and every single department here in the courthouse and the highway department, Billy, goes through when it comes time to replace people, and- and maybe that will help us gain an understanding before the budget comes along. I'm asking you to think about that for a month and then maybe come back. I don't even wanna put anybody on two committees, but I'm looking maybe for everybody to participate on at least one, and maybe your interest and expertise might-
I'll be glad to- I'll be glad to work on that one that- that I have talked about a lot, quite a bit about the three or four-tier different pays. But I think there's- what I'm looking at, but what you're- I think what you're saying is really you're wanting us to look at the whole pay, which is we've off- whenever we did give a raise, we never had the rate- the salary raised, the starting salary. I think that's something to look into. What I've been wanting to look into is these four different things, like if we have the courthouse, which should be, if we're gonna negotiate raises, we can negotiate out of the general fund. If we're gonna negotiate the highway, then we can negotiate out of the highway fund. If we're gonna negotiate with the 24-hour service, we got two different entities there. The sheriff's department's out of the general fund and the 911 is paid out of the 24- or out of that collection, whatever we collect for that. Plus now we gotta- then when you get to think about this, and I don't mind looking into this with the- I'll pick a couple people from the council to look in with to help me with it, but we need to look at it at the taxing unit too. We got like, if the health department, we give raises in the courthouse and the health department, it's got their own budget, they got their own taxing unit, so maybe their taxing will not withstand a raise. So there's- there's four of them, probably four of them that we would probably wanna separate, and it could be put in our handbook that way too. So I'll be glad to look into that.
Thank you.
I'll pick a couple guys to help me.
I'll work with Russ on that.
Appreciate it. Wolfie?
I'll work with you.
Good. So will- will we be working on that and then?
Okay, thank you.
I think the- the starting salaries would fall under- I'm not sure that would fall under this, this what we're trying to do.
Well, I almost think it'd have to go hand-in-hand.
Well, we can get it hand-in-hand. Once we get a general idea of which way we wanna go-
Those starting salaries haven't been changed.
But don't you think, Debbie, by-
Since the 90s when I worked on-
Debbie, with the- working with the- when we're talking about different, negotiating different areas of the courthouse, by itself and this, also the taxing units would have to be that way too. We would talk about the cemetery, which we don't have nobody, but the cemetery, we would talk about the health department would be different because we could- we could give raises to the courthouse and the health department's budget wouldn't withstand-
Might not support it.
That's right, same way with the- so that may end up maybe four, maybe four, maybe five different.
Well, I think that's something important and, you know, at the blink of an eye, it'll be budget time again, and I think that we've asked everyone here in the courthouse to, you know, do extraordinary- be extraordinarily creative in getting by. So I think that would go hand-in-hand with the budget committee, so I'm thinking- I was thinking of asking, waiting until next month, but Dale, perhaps Mike Winta has indicated he would be interested in helping with the budget committee and Mark. And that way, we- between the two of us, we'd all have a better understanding and we can share because I- I just feel like-
So the budget is gonna be Dale, Mike Winta, and yourself?
Or Mark?
Has indicated- Well, you can't put four people on it if you were gonna sit on it because that would be a quorum.
That would be a quorum.
Okay. So it's whatever.
Mark, perhaps maybe if you would be interested, I could sit off, I could stay off and just-
Yeah, I'm- I'm willing to come in if it matters.
So, and you?
We could then get our heads back together or maybe, you know, set some meetings up and come to some meaningful understanding and help us all when it comes time for budget time. I don't know, certainly how can you look at cutting any more positions, but certainly there's maybe some things we could get smarter. I appreciate everybody's volunteering. Are we down to additional appropriations? County general prosecutor's bad check fee? Debbie, you got some information about that?
Well, we talked about that last- we talked about that last time, and the statute that says that, you know, you can put what fees were charged to collect that's passed on, then you can put that in the- that's passed on, then you can put that and then you pay that over and then the code allows you to appropriate that money for the purpose of things for the prosecutor's office.
Basically with this, I would, I'll be doing it on a monthly basis now. When I started in July, I didn't realize that any money that was collected, bad fee, bad check fee, would revert to county general at the end of the year.
Okay.
So I think the initial amount is for $1,200, $1,200 something. That's actually what we collected and didn't spend last year that reverted back into county general. So you asked me to reappropriate that back into that check line.
It was appropriated in 2012, but went unspent.
Went unspent.
So she would like to reappropriate it for 2013 along with whatever she collects in 2013.
From here forward, I would probably see monthly if I collect monthly.
I think you did put an additional in that will be her next time.
Okay.
I got a question. I got a question on the bad check. Is this a check that has been written to the county by somebody and-
To a business. A business that has tried to collect themselves on a bad check, has to do certified mail and that kind of stuff. If they can't collect on it, they can choose to order to us. I send out a check or a letter saying, you got a bad check, now you have then their fees and now you owe me a fee. And if you don't make good, we're going to file criminal charges. We're checking something.
So basically, we're being asked to reappropriate funds that weren't unspent.
They're not asked the question.
Not spent. How does it, do we all feel about that? We're looking at what, $1,265?
Does this go back to a line item in the prosecutor's budget?
Yes. Natural bad check. I think it's a bad check.
Okay. Does the prosecutor's office have plans, any particular plans in spending this money?
Yeah, we can use it for pretty much anything, any kind of office supplies or any kind of that kind of stuff. So it's just, for example, a little bit of stuff for us to take in paper, you know, any of those kind of things we can use for. Because it doesn't actually, I don't think the statute reads that there's an actual purpose for what it has to be spent on, like what forms you can do.
Like if you needed a new printer.
Right. We need a printer, fax machine, pretty much whatever we can spend it on.
Any ideas, suggestions?
I think it's safe to say that this line item is not going to accumulate much money.
Yeah. About, I usually, I think last month I did $55. I put one in for the next thing, it's 55. Some months I won't collect anything because it's pretty much business driven. I mean, if they don't drop off checks to me, then I don't go looking for them or anything.
Well, if it gives them money for office supplies or whatever, be one less additional appropriation you'd have to be over here for, right?
So basically, what we're doing is if you're, you're putting it back into the general fund, you want to take it out of the general fund and put it back?
No, it stays in the, it stays in the general fund line item that she wants to appropriate it.
Yes.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Going forward, do you want me to attend monthly meetings when I have these additionals or is it basically not?
I don't know why we couldn't just handle them without, I mean, there isn't, it's just cut and dried, you know?
Sure. I just didn't know if it was better to be, if you had questions.
I don't see why you have to go.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, public defender fund, offer's attorney.
That is, I'll go ahead since there's nobody to speak to it. This is to use remaining bond money that a prisoner paid in from his bond to use it to pay his attorney fee. And it's in the amount of $2,715. So that's just that much less that we would have to pay from county general for the, for that public defender. So he's paying his own.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Who made that motion?
Jim. Jim made the motion.
Jim made the motion?
I said.
Number three on the list, emergency management, wireless broadband, donations.
Well, he had already turned in this additional appropriation, which state board of accounts says that really donations don't require additional appropriation. But he had put it in, so I went ahead and let it. This is to pay his wireless broadband for the entire year to cost us $600 from that donation money. And the commissioners last year approved for him to have that wireless broadband.
This was donated money?
Yeah.
Where's he get his donated money from?
It's been there, it's been kind of sitting there for a while. I could go back and look, but it's, it's like in the fund is $4,355.94.
So it's not like it's, he's down to $600?
Yeah.
They'll leave him still for $700? The commissioners approved the broadband last year. Last year. This will pay for it for the entire year? I have a motion.
Motion.
Okay, Mike makes a motion to take $600 to pay for the one-year wireless broadband. You have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Dale.
I got a question. How, how wireless broadband, how, how big of an area is that covered?
Well-
I mean, like, you know, you got Wi-Fi up there in the park, covers the entire park.
No, I think what this has, this, I remember when he discussed it with the commissioners, what it was for, so that if he was out on a, on an emergency, like he used, for example, when they had that plane crash east of town, he could set up a wireless hotspot for all of the responders to that area, and that's what that's used for.
It's no new taxpayers' money, it is coming out of donations. It just makes it a little bit simpler for him to set up and operate.
Right, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved this $600. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and do that transfer now?
Yes. We've had an additional, or a request for a transfer for the circuit court from budget item 136-1-12, moving six, moving $250 from budget line salary to budget line law books, $250.
And the reason there is additional money in that, that's a personnel line item, is because she had, when her, what was it, BAYA for recorder, reporter? Yeah. When her court reporter left, there was additional money in her line item because she made substantially more money than what a new hire came in and made. And she wants to move $250 from that line item down to pay for law books. And, you know, this is-
I'll make a motion. It's a motion.
Mark Flum, second?
Second.
I thought we, I thought they was going directly online with their law book stuff. When did, we still?
I don't know.
That just amazes me about the law books.
We discussed that at-
Last year, I think, this time.
Yeah, I don't know.
If I remember right, Russ, I think there's a small law pamphlets that-
These are pamphlets?
That the court uses for juror education, if I recall right. That may be what this is for. Mark, you may know more about that than I do. I remember her talking about information, printed information that they had to-
I can understand that. Law books, I'm not, I'm not real sure about the law books.
If it was a law books and they're doing it online, is there, is there a fee, an activation fee or a subscription fee?
Yes, that's a subscription service.
So, I mean, they're not getting it for free, I'm sure.
No.
Somebody's got to subscribe to it.
Right.
I'm not really sure.
Well, where did we leave off here?
Motion and second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Poor lonely Melinda.
Melinda, how did you?
There's the 144.
Okay.
For a person.
Melinda, sometimes we save the best for last.
Oh, listen to you. I have a person retiring after 23 years of service to the county and- Snow? She is leaving April the 19th, and I would like to request permission to hire someone in her place. And I, as you know, I've already done without a person since October of 2011. We had seven people, we're down to six now. And hopefully, I'll be able to stay at six. This person was a previous employee of Fayette County. She has four years' experience. She was one of the people that left in January, and that's why the salary is at 18,447 instead of the starting salary, which is 16,747. So I would hope that you would approve her at the salary that she left at.
Okay, so you started her at the salary she left.
Right.
The person left, what was their salary?
The person that, that is leaving April, the one that's retiring, she's been here for 23 years, so she's up in the 20-some.
I go 25,547.
Thank you. So I won't need an additional to pay for my new employee.
You'd be saving $7,000 off of it.
Right, right.
And would still be able to have a qualified, an experienced courthouse employee with-
No training required.
Well, yes. She's never been in my office. She does have the same description as my other girls. The job description is the, what, CMOT is that what it's called?
Yes.
So that's good, that she left with that job description and it matches all the ones in my office.
I'll make a motion, second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Melinda, there was, there was some discussion earlier in the commissioners' meeting about not the ability to make sure that we would hire someone back at the same position or the same, instead of going back to starting pay.
Well, I wasn't aware of that, but I'm glad that was brought up because-
And AJ, maybe, I think, were you?
Yeah, no, actually, it was actually a large audience.
What'd you say? What was you saying? What was you saying? I didn't hear what you said.
There was, there was some discussion this morning that I wanted to just continue on from that discussion this morning and ask AJ because there was, there was the hope that last fall, or, you know, with the budget cuts, that maybe some of, if the opportunity came up to rehire any of the people that were laid off, that we would give first consideration to bring back.
Of course, that's up to the office holder too.
I understand. I understand.
I was just fortunate enough to be able to do that.
I don't know if, if they're, again, going just by some of the conversation, if we have everything in place to be able to, you know, avail ourselves of that group of people and whether or not we could bring them back at existing. This, you just happen to be the first person that has-
Right, and it does set a precedence because it is the first time this has been brought up.
And I did think, AJ, I think what we probably need to do, we, we discuss, there are layoffs that are discussed in the employee handbook, and it talks about recalls and that they're giving 10 days' notice and whatever. But nothing really is said about that they retain their salary if they're rehired within any time and, you know, that discussion happened. I actually think that it, it should just be an amendment to the employee handbook and then that's done as, as a resolution, making an amendment to the handbook and then the commissioner sign off on it and the council sign off on it.
Yeah, I think, and that's-
Now, you might-
It seems to be originating, yeah, with the commissioners. And we had discussed this morning about having a resolution or an ordinance, and I think we decided it was going to be a resolution.
Right.
But, yeah, I like the language of it just being a resolution to amend the handbook.
And then, yeah, because then that goes on as long as the handbook goes on and then, you know, becomes language in that handbook.
And I believe we put it on the schedule for the next meeting and open it up to public comment, so I encourage you, county council.
Well, and then this kind of goes along with that committee that we, that Russ has volunteered to, to chair. Some discussion about that.
When you were discussing that, I was like, that connects with what I'm here for. Do you need another copy of that document?
I think, I think one's enough.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Melinda. I suddenly just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you very much. Everybody have a safe trip home.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks.
I think we're down to patron concerns, but our patrons have-
There's no patron to be concerned.
Given up on us.
Thank you, Shawnee.
Yes?
Back last month under the funds, I made a motion on line item 251-25101-3-70 for county planning. We was kind of sure of it, that any money be spent out of that coming forth council. We agreed to it, found out it wasn't, we couldn't do it that way. So I want to make a motion that, because I have a hearing, I think, Debbie, that we want to take that money out of that, that if there's any money, if they need any money for travel or anything, they come to the council first. Was I right?
Yeah, that's what you made. If they were going to spend from that fund, that they ask councils permission first.
But we found out it wasn't legal, right? Found out it wasn't legal to do it that way.
Yeah, we talked to the state board of accounts, field examiner, and she said you could basically, you could have like a gentleman's agreement, you know, between commissioners and council that you do that, but if I, if there's an approved appropriation in there and I have a claim that matches that, then I could go ahead and pay for that. I'm not throwing myself into the mix, I'm just saying.
Right. But I want, I want to make a motion tonight that we take the money out of that and if there's any money that's needed, then they can come ask for additional money.
You would have to do that by putting in for a reduction to the budget, which will be advertised in, additionals and reductions are all advertised in the paper, and then you vote on them at, at the next meeting. So that would have to be done by way of-
I'll make, I'll make motion and we ask for reduction.
I'll second it.
Who did that? You did.
Okay. Maybe, can you go back and clarify for me? I'm sorry, I'm a little dense. I understand that we maybe got ahead of ourselves last month.
Well, there's money in that fund that can be used for about anything, and the commissioners spent $5,000 out of it for sidewalks, which is not benefit the county sidewalks at all. And I don't think it should be up to two people, this kind of money should be spent. It should be come before the seven council members, for them to give their okay for that kind of money be spent. So that's why I want to reduce it.
Okay. And so we had some discussion with how we, how we can do that. So you're wanting to make a motion to take-
Take the funds out of that, or the funds?
Take the funds out. Take money out of that fund. Take it down to zero.
Okay.
Where, Debbie, do we have to tell where we want to put that money, what the fund to put it in?
You, you don't have to put it anywhere, I guess. You could do a reduction, just do a reduction. But-
Does that work? Does that work for a plan? Is that where it's coming from?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just leading in, how much? How much is it?
How much is?
15,000?
15,000.
So we're taking this money away from the commissioners' line item budget.
If they need something, they can come forth council?
Can't.
Ask for it?
You can't decide it tonight, but we could advertise for a reduction to the budget and, and then you could vote on it at the next meeting.
Let me ask some questions. Did we, they approved their capital improvement plan and we approved that too, right? So how does that affect that?
You don't, you don't approve it. They, they come up with the capital plan, which they're, they're working on now. They come up with the capital plan and then it's, and then it's up to you at budget time if you, you know, to appro, to appropriate to that plan.
Okay, okay. So you're reducing.
And how the ca, and how the capital plan- And how the, and how the capital plan is done, like this year, we have an increase, I think it's $774,000 from $723,000 in edit funds, in, yeah, last year, well, the last capital plan, we did get some additional money, it's been $774 this year. So, so the first section of that capital plan is to pay part of the courthouse bond, and then, and we put 100, they always put $100,000 in there for utilities, and then anything that's done for related facilities, and then the balance, after you subtract that portion out, is divided, 52% goes to the city, and then 48% goes to the county, and then the commissioners come up with the plan for the expenditures of that 48%, and that's how the capital plan is.
Okay.
So we wanted, if we wanted to take, we're going to take the 15 grand out of there, and we're going to reduce that budget, and that's the same, is that the same plan that's got the EDG money in?
Yeah.
So if we wanted to reduce that budget to 60 grand out of there, we could do that, too, right?
You do have 60, so if you wanted to take all of the 60 in.
We just take it all out, what happens? I mean, can it be done?
Do I not understand that it has to be advertised?
Yeah, but it could be done, yeah.
But it could be done, we just got to advertise.
Yeah.
And vote it.
Okay.
And we would hear from our.
You reduced it from, you reduced it from 110 to 90, and then from 90 to 60.
Yes.
And then you're wanting to reduce it.
No, I just asked that question.
We're just asking in general.
Speculation, yeah.
Could happen.
Okay. So if it could happen that way, and again, we're talking about the $15,000 in the commissioners' line item, then would that, $15,000, if it goes out, then give the city of Connersville 52% of that money, and the county 48%?
No, if you've already appropriated for this year, and the money's been divided, then it just sits, it just sits there, and our portion of it unappropriated, which there is some money that's been there unappropriated, like, for example, we appropriated for the jail roof one year, and then, you know, it wasn't spent until the next year, so, you know, you've had some funds sitting there, but that would be your only mechanism if you wanted to have money for an economic development project, like where Stans come to us, you know, because we don't have any rainy day fund anymore, you know, we got a dab, but not much, like, you know. So that would be your only way of helping to fund some type of project like that, through past unspent appropriations that have been in that fund.
Unspent appropriations. So, we have a motion on the floor and a second, and there's been discussion and further discussion, but do I understand that really, before we could do that, we have to advertise?
So what you, yeah, and this is kind of different, because normally, with an additional and a reduction, like, for instance, my budget in county general auditor's office, and I submit my budget, say I wanted to take, say I had, I had an employee, you know, I wanted to do an additional and a reduction somewhere, or you wanted to reduce in my, in my budget and put it in someone else's budget, you know, through an additional. Usually that's initiated by whoever submits that budget to begin with, so I guess, I'm saying, I've never, I've never thought about this, because the commissioners were the one that submitted that budget to begin with.
And if I understand.
But I don't know why, I mean, I don't, you know.
Your motion is to put it back the way it was before, and then to advertise before the next meeting.
No, they're, what they, he wants to do is totally take that $15,000 line item in the current budget and take it to zero. Am I extending correctly?
That's right, you're right. That's, that's the way I second the motion.
Yeah. Okay. So where, where do we advertise that?
Well, I, you, there has to be an additional, well, fees that you'll be signing on these additionals, that gets filled out, and then I advertise it, has to be advertised at least 10 days prior to your April 2nd meeting.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded, there's been discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And could I vote? I would like to oppose that. Okay. Pass, motion carried. Next. How about a motion, voter?
I'll make a motion, voter.
Mike, and second? By Mark?
Which Mark?
That Mark. Mark Flum. Moved and seconded, we adjourned meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please everyone be very careful when we.
And Debbie, you've got two things to say.